And we're going to start with Counselor Green.
Thank you, Madam President. Item eight is the labor agreement with the firefighters, which we held a mini meeting, joint committee meeting with myself and Councilman Joe last week. Are there any further questions from counselors on that? Well, then I'll give it back to you.
Thank you, sir. I have item number nine, and I do have a Commissioner's deed, so I will call that one ready. Counselor Green again.
You. So item 10 is companion item for the firefighters agreement. Item 11 is the appropriation of funds for ARPA for the Downtown Festival Fund. So why don't I begin? I know Jen sent over some information this morning, so why don't you talk about that, and then we'll open up your question.
Sure, happy to, Counselor. So Jen Tiff, Director of Strategic Initiatives, as Counselor Green mentioned, I did send earlier this morning just a brief one pager. You know, we've been getting some questions, obviously, since the committee meeting took place last week about really more related to the criteria that might be used to ultimately award funds to festival organizations and what the makeup of the committee would be for the selection committee that works with the Downtown Syracuse Foundation to award the funds. So, you know, really, the one pager, you know, just aims to kind of provide that, you know, that summary. Happy to, happy to answer any other questions or step through it. I don't know if everyone had a chance to read it in advance, but, you know, one of the important things to note is, you know, because we are using ARPA funding for this, there are some rules and regulations that we just need to ensure that we're following. And so that's why we, again, think it's important to use a sub recipient like the Downtown Syracuse Foundation to really help us have a, you know, a robust application process that collects all the information we need to ultimately justify to the federal government why we're using the funds for festivals here. And so the criteria are really intended to help us make that case based on the ARPA regulation. So we're looking to collect information, you know, really about not just the location of where the festivals are proposed, but, you know, how large those festivals are intended to be in terms of the crowd size, how likely those festivals are going to be to really generate visitors that create, you know, opportunities for tourism in the city and some of those types of details. So that's kind of why you see some of the criteria that are included there. Obviously, we do, you know, need to kind of have a sense of how big the events are going to be. And then ultimately, you know, we know, we want to support festivals that are not just in the core business district or downtown Syracuse, but around the city. So, you know, the committee that would be pulled together to make these selections would ultimately be looking at, you know, the different types of festivals that would be happening potentially around the city. We do have some thoughts as well on what that committee makeup would look like, and this was done in conjunction with the Downtown Committee. So they're obviously fully on board with the proposal. There would be three members of their Downtown Syracuse Foundation Board on the selection committee, but in addition, we'd look to have two members of Common Council, two members of the city administration, and then, you know, a couple of folks that really represent more of the tourism and hospitality industry and the arts and culture industry, again, so that we can be pretty confident that ultimately the selections are going to be in line with funding eligibility as established by ARPA and also in line with our community arts and culture priorities. And so there's, you know, we believe ample city representation outside of, you know, the Downtown Syracuse Foundation Board. And ideally, that representation is really representing all of our neighborhoods as well. So I'll pause here and just see if there are other specific questions or if Merrick Tryer, who I think is on, has anything to add.
I'm sorry, I was having audio issues, so I only tuned in, Jen, when you were explaining the committee composition.
No worries, Merrick. Does anyone have any other questions about the criteria or the committee?
Any other questions on this item, probably?
No, not questions, Counselor Green, but I still intend to offer a motion that all the counselors will get on tomorrow. I'm working with the Law Department, and the motion will relate to bringing the Syracuse Jazz Festival downtown again to revitalize our downtown core. The amendment will include carving out of $125,000 from this $375,000, which will, by the way, match funds to some extent. As far as the festival goes, yesterday I saw legal documentation that Mr. Mel Fattano has lined up a significant principal sponsor. And also, as I mentioned before, there's been a pledge brought from the county to support this, which is, when you think about it, the county supporting the festival coming downtown again is certainly music to my ears. You know, we went through this to quite an extent, our last committee meeting. I don't think I need to. I believe the Syracuse Jazz Festival is just what downtown needs. It led to resurgence of downtown once before, and I believe that it is such a significant musical and cultural event that it's headed heels over any other event that we've ever stayed in. Many of you have a long history with events downtown, so that's all I got. So I plan to offer that amendment to this item on Monday. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
This is Counselor Caldwell. Quick question. What I would say is arts and culture is dear to me. I think it's amazing. I grew up going to Syracuse Jazz, I mean, Saratoga Jazz Festival. I love music. I think arts and culture is a key, and we have to push it back into our community for our young adults. And just soothing to that. I love music. I wake up and I turn on music. My only concern is we're being equitable, fair and equitable to all. How do we, and I think Frank is amazing, and I think the Jazz Festival is amazing, I have ten many years. How do we allow one organization to get that amount, and then we don't allow other organizations? The Juneteenth, the Spanish Festival, the West Coast, how do we say one is better than the other and allow that equitable for our community? We're saying equitable, and we want everyone to have a part. How do we transparently show that, that we're going to say, oh, this one is better because of this? How does that look?
Well, if that was, question was to me, Counselor Caldwell, I would say, hey, I think we're being transparent by having this discussion right now. I believe that this Syracuse Jazz Festival, which I worked with for many years, from 1981 on until he left the city, you know, it was the principal responsible for the resurgence of downtown. And it's a little like sports. You know, I worked with all the other festivals, and, you know, Ryan Fitzpatrick's a hell of a quarterback, but Tom Brady is the GOAT. And this Syracuse Jazz Festival, because of its attraction, because of its, some of the people that played there, I mean, you're talking about principal entertainers like Diane Warwick, you're talking about the Combe Base Orchestra, you're talking about Aretha. Has a potential to once again draw massive crowds downtown that by any means pack the downtown restaurants and bars. And also, towards the end of the Jazz Festival, we had a significant amount of hotel trade, too. So I think we're comparing apples and oranges as far as comparing the Jazz Festival to any other entity that has ever staged anything downtown.
I just have a comment. I raised a word of caution before, and I will raise it again in how we proceed with this matter. I just would like to use this opportunity to voice some concerns I have with the legislation in front of us. It is our job in the council to oversee the support and support policy, which will provide all citizens with the same opportunity to access public funding. And most importantly, the process is designed on a level playing field for everyone. The petition before us does not satisfy that basic requirement, I don't think. What we have before us is a custom-tailored petition that ultimately benefits one individual, whom according to what we have in front of us, or at least what I've been able to see point in time, it's peddling a great, a grand idea, but it's based on a lot of what-ifs. Has not affordable, I mean, it has not afforded this council specific information and has not been vetted by any norm of accountability or transparency. You know, when I decided to run for this seat, I made a commitment to people of the City of Syracuse to be vigilant and disciplined when it comes to taxpayer dollars. The ARPA funding, it's not a piñata. It is a tool to be used to not only help this city and its environment communities, but to recover from almost two years of economic slowdown caused by the pandemic. And please don't get me wrong, I believe downtown festivals are a great idea, not just one, but all of them. It would bring a much-needed economy injection to our downtown businesses and would place Syracuse and the arts in the arts map across not only central New York, hopefully the northeast area, right? I don't have a problem with thinking big. What I have is a problem with this petition aiming to alter a process, which we are in the course of implementing in order to benefit the ones of one individual whom, I repeat, has not, I don't think he has provided this council, in my opinion, adequate evidence that this proposal is viable and sustainable. There's already funding designated for the Downtown Foundation to distribute for the purpose of arts festivals to be celebrated in our city. And at last week's dedicated committee meeting, we discussed capacity through their tier application process to support festivals. And as of this nature, it is their responsibility to evaluate each proposal, as has been done in the past, and there is no reason to deviate from that path. Neither the City Council nor the City of Syracuse have the adequate expertise to evaluate an individual proposal. This should fall on the shoulders of those prepared to evaluate this proposal. I don't think that's us. The council does not legislate for individuals, not should the City of Syracuse govern in that matter either. I understand that the capacity of the festival, but I do think that all the festivals bring the same capacity to the downtown area. And there should just be an equitable process, you know, that would evaluate everybody as one body and not independent cases, one-to-one.
But, you know. I'd like to point out to the counselor that the Syracuse Jazz Festival, 18-year resume, they were downtown for 18 years. They were the forerunner of all the other festivals. I mean, Mr. Mel Fattano has already garnered money to co-sponsor here in excess of $400,000. This would be, you're right, this would be a major event, absolutely a major event. I think our problem in this city many times is we don't aim high enough. Syracuse Jazz Festival was the largest outdoor jazz, free outdoor jazz festival in the northeast at one point. It was also available to many people that could never afford to see any kind of entertainers, like Mr. Mel Fattano brought in. I mean, it is absolutely patented nonsense that this, that his festival, his resume is not like as stellar as any jazz festival promoter anywhere in the country. We've already been through this before. It was done before. And I think the benefit to the downtown businesses is saying that we're open once again for business will be magnificent. And as far as the Common Council goes, I think it's incumbent of us to decide where this money goes. I'm not sure we should hand it over to all these other sub recipients, because in the end, we're going to have to, like, account for it with the federal government, the Common Council is. So that's all I have to say on that subject. And by the way, I just want to, one other thing. If the council decides to not act on this, the Jazz Festival probably won't happen. It needs this funding to be a major festival, and if the council says no to it, it will not happen this summer.
Clear, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike. Do we have a clear, defined definition of what festival, what a festival is? So if people were going to apply for it, is there a clear definition of what is considered a festival and what they have to have at a festival so they can apply for it? Saw the application process, it didn't look too difficult, but there's nothing that specifies all the festival in order to require this money, this is what the festival has to have. Do we have that?
I would, I would, sorry, if I could just chime in, Counselor Driscoll here. One thing I would say when I spoke to Merrick, I don't know if Merrick cares to chime in, but when we talk about equity with the Jazz Fest as well as compared to other festivals and deciding how this money gets distributed and who's eligible and what is a fair distribution, one of the criteria that Merrick had discussed in distributing this money was making sure that there was a four-to-one match for whatever amount the city put forward. That, you know, if a festival was able to raise $40,000 to fund its operations, then the city would subsidize that to the tune of around $10,000. Unless I, I'll leave that to Merrick to comment, but I would say that Jazz Fest, this proposal with Mr. Mel Fattano, I have spoken to Assemblyman Sterpi, who is working on $250,000 of state money. The county executive is working on over $100,000, and there's corporate sponsors as well. So the proposed amount that Mr. Mel Fattano was looking for would not be out of proportion with the criteria that's being discussed for making someone eligible for this size of amount. And I would just echo Counselor Hogan's comments that when we look at numbers of people drawn by festivals, when you compare the previous numbers of Jazz Fest and some of the others to stuff like Italian Fest or, you know, some of the other stuff, it's more on par with it with a taste of Syracuse-type level than, you know, 35,000, 40,000-type numbers, much larger than many others. So, but yeah, I would leave it to Merrick to go into all the details about what criteria are, but just, I know Counselor Caldwell, when you asked that question about equity, I think that's an important one to note, that people would need four times the amount of matching funds that they're asking for, which I do believe from speaking to other reps that Mr. Mel Fattano has. But I let Merrick comment on what the other criteria are.
All right. So the last session, we had talked about a sort of a tiered approach, because, you know, I think it's, we recognize that there are a variety of different event sizes and scales, and there's just different levels of sophistication for the event organizers. And so, you know, what we had anticipated would be an application process that would be built to consider these different scales of events. And so one of the concerns, though, with some of our local events is they may not be able to afford the certain, a certain match requirement. So we wanted to make this an accessible fund to be able to support a number of different events throughout the different business corridors within the city. So the thought had been, you know, if there was, you know, sort of maybe two paths, if you can envision it that way. If you are able to have a match requirement, you would be eligible. The event would be eligible for a larger amount of funding, but those that were not choosing a match patch, match path, may be eligible for up to like 20,000 to 25,000, depending on, Counselor Caldwell, with your question, part of the application, you know, asks them to describe the event itself. And because ARPA funds expressly allow for financial support of programs that are likely to attract visitors and tourists, especially to business corridors, we're going to be asking applicants for an estimate of their event attendance pre-pandemic, if it existed pre-pandemic, like what is their track record? For new or new events, giving us an estimate of their expected attendance, and then we're asking them, you know, how do they base that, you know, what were their conclusions based on? So it could be something where previous track record of the popularity of an event, you know, may be the justification for how they got to a certain number, or, you know, for new events, we don't want to not be able to fund those. So for the new events, how did you get to your estimate, which is something that, you know, for a festival, any, you know, participant, if there's food vendors, if there's musicians, if there's like the geography for which the event is being held, those are all things that event organizers would take into consideration. So just using downtown as an example, a, you know, an event that may be appropriate for Hanover Square may not be appropriate for Clinton Square because of just the size and scale of the event. So I think our hope with this fund was to be able to support a variety of different events sizes and scales, and again, intended to bring tourism into the area. So it would appeal to not only area residents, but would attract outside residents as well.
And we don't doubt that this will be a great event for our downtown area. All we're asking is that it goes through the same process to be accountable and show transparency through it. That's, you know, the money can be waiting for you at the other side of your application. You know, it's just, there is a process that everybody else will go through.
Thank you, Counselor. So, and I just, I agree, Counselor Peniagua, it sounds like Jazz Fest would be an excellent addition to downtown. However, I think for the festivals that have been committed to the city over the last two decades, I have trouble explaining to them why they would be kind of second-tier status through this. So very supportive of Jazz Fest. That's just my personal position. Is there any other?
Counselor Green, if I could just, the Jazz Fest only left downtown was because Clinton Square was undergoing the renovation. They could not be guaranteed a site. That is the only reason they left downtown. Jazz Festival was one of the reasons that we were able to get $7 million to renovate Clinton Square for the ice rink and everything else because of our success of putting Jazz Festival in. As many counselors, well, maybe President Hudson certainly remembers, we used to have to close Erie Boulevard West off. The only reason Jazz Fest left downtown was because they couldn't be guaranteed Clinton Square. That's how they ended up the OCC. So they did not leave because, you know, they had a better deal up there. They left because there wasn't a place for them.
Yeah, but then the renovations finished a while ago, and why didn't they return?
Why, Counselor?
No, I'm saying the renovations finished a long time ago, so why didn't they come back?
Well, I don't know. I mean, they probably had a pretty good deal up there at OCC, probably had a better deal than the city gave them. And I have a feeling that, you know, unfortunately, I think we're going through somewhat the same thing right now. So, I mean, you talk to the people in the downtown restaurant area that are still around. It's to talk to Mr. Clam over at the old former at Prime, and maybe, maybe you'll get a different outlook on some of the things, how important this might be to downtown.
Counselor Green, in being a person that has produced many festivals before, I think that the fact that they had, they could generate income from parking and food vendors, that could have probably been, you know, a factor.
There are food vendors down at Clinton Square, too. And in fact, Mr. Mel Fattano said he's going to have a significantly less amount of food vendors, so people can actually go out, actually be more prone to go out and dine at the different restaurants.
All right. Thank you all. We'll move to item 12, which is correction of tax rule. Commissioner OJ?
Hey, everybody. Matt OJ, Commissioner of Assessment. We'd like to amend ordinance force, what is this, sorry, 461 passed last year. That was a batch of seven properties on the tax roll that needed to be changed. Unbeknownst to us, there was a clerical error in one of those, 139 Hastings Place. So we are coming back to set that right, and in the process, all of them are on there. But six of the seven are unchanged, and 139 Hastings Place does need a correction on last year's rule.
Any questions on this item? Okay. Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Peniagua.
Good afternoon, everybody, again. It's Frank Halli, oh, there you are, I see you, Frank. So we're putting forth, it's item 13. This is, we're back to the PMA Management Corporation contract. This is a contract that services not only the city, but the Syracuse City School District. And I believe we are in year two of that contract in the city side of things. We were working with the PMA officials and representatives to see if we could implement a process where we can get some more detail on how we can streamline and make our workers' compensation program better so that we can ultimately have savings for the city. But I'll have Frank talk about that more. If you can jump in, Frank, that'd be great.
Sure. Thanks, Counselor Peniagua. So we've had a very productive partnership with PMA and are looking to, for the council to authorize the first of the two renewals that are in the contract. They manage our payments under Workers' Comp from soup to nuts. That's the third-party administrator piece of it, so all the logistics of making payments under Workers' Comp. But beyond that, they have been tremendous partners, as Counselor Peniagua mentioned, in helping us look at revitalizing our safety committee, revitalizing our safety practices, particularly over DPW, where 65% of our claims come from. And they have a wealth of expertise in doing that. As we look to hire a new Director of Human Resources, which we hope to accomplish over the next few days, actually, and a new manager of employment and workplace risk, PMA has offered, and we're asking you to authorize us to accept that offer, of $13,000 additional consulting above and beyond their existing contract and the consulting that's in there. That $13,000, they would bring in experts on their national team to look at the key departments where we have significant risks. So DPW, and they would bring in experts from DPW. They would also bring in former firefighters and former police officers to look at some of the safety factors that, while we don't have Workers' Comp programming there, we do have 207 programming there, and to provide us with an audit, if you will, of some of the concerns that we could be addressing and address more aggressively once we have the two new positions in place over the next couple of weeks. So we're anxious to continue our relationship with PMA, as it's been very productive, and I think will be even more productive.
So we were able to fill the one position, and we're looking within the next few weeks to do the other two, right?
That's correct. Yep, we filled the, we filled one of the safety positions. We have one more to fill, and then we have the Director of Human Resources to fill.
So let me ask you this. So in the event, right, that hopefully not, but in the event that we don't, we're not able to fill those positions as quickly as we want to, who will be, who from the staff would be assessing and, you know, making, dealing with the findings?
So we have three people right now that are collaborating on working on that. So we have the newly-named Assistant Director of Human Resources, Margaret Chika, and so she's taking some of this on. We have one of the personnel specialists. one of the Personnel Specialists who has some expertise in this in her past time with the Police Department, Wendy Murphy. And then we also have Alison Mondo, who is managing, working with PMA to manage the claims. And I'm sticking my nose in it once in a while as well. So there's, you know, three and a half of us that are that are working on this. Obviously, it's going to be much better when we have those two positions filled than we we expect to have those filled, as I say, in the next, hopefully conceivably, as the director as early as this week.
Excellent. So and then in the interest of of keeping the initiative moving forward, if, I mean, in ways to for us to be informed, can we implement maybe a quarterly meeting where where we know where things stand?
So there, absolutely. There is a stewardship meeting, as PMA calls it, where they review all of our performance and payments and make suggestions. And they issue a a report and we will certainly make that report available to the to the council. And in in many cases, that stewardship meeting can be, there's sometimes some legal things that are discussed in there around settlements and claims. But generally, the bulk of that meeting would be open to any counselor that wants to attend.
So maybe when there's no windows, sorry.
Absol- absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you. Are there any other questions from any of the other counselors or committee members?
Yeah, Frank, I remember two months ago when we had a committee meeting on this, and there was an idea of maybe somehow looking into contracting out some of this position if we were if we were struggling with recruitment and finding good candidates. Is that still the case or are we in a position where we can actually fill them and do what we need to do?
We've actually had, it's a, it's a, it's a important question, Counselor, because we were very open to 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 doing that. But we've had excellent response to both positions. And I'm I'm pretty confident we're going to be able to bring those positions internal very quickly. But PMA, again, credit to the relationship. They have really stepped up and been very proactive in working with us during this time during this transition period. But we're pretty comfortable. We're going to be able to fill the positions.
Yeah, I I I am pretty happy that we are heading into this direction, Frank, because I think anybody, any counselor here would attest to that. We we are just tired of losing so much money to to accidents and other things, you know, that that we should find ways to kind of reduce that, you know. So so this, I I think this is a good, this is a good direction. It's a great start.
Thanks, Counselor.
Anyone else? Any more comments? Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Schultz. You're on mute, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam President. I have prepared a resolution to appoint Richard Levy to the open position for the First District on the CRB. And he will be replacing Dana Natale, who apparently has moved out of state and her term was completed in December. So Richard is a constituent in the First District. The resume is included in the book. He is really supportive in the community. He's volunteered at Assumption Food Pantry. He's a retired dentist. In my opinion, he's very reliable, which I think goes a long way these days as far as accountability goes. He's extremely educated. He's a fair moral person, and I really believe that he would be excellent on this, in this position for the First District. Questions?
Thank you, Counselor, for doing that. We've been looking forward to having somebody be in that position. So thank you for doing that.
Very welcome. It's my honor and pleasure. And I just have to say that I dealt with Lori Nielsen on this, and she's wonderful, too. So kudos to the whole CRB because the work they do is so important.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Counselor Hogan.
Thank you, President Hudson. I am, it's item 15. I don't know if Michael Collins wants to say anything about this, or I talked at length with him.
Counselor Deputy Mayor is going to speak to this one.
Deputy Mayor? Okay.
So the SUNY EOC, important workforce training partner of ours is has submitted an application to New York State to develop an applied trades and technic technological career center or workforce development center at nine oh nine Montgomery. Just to give you kind of a physical placeholder, EOC is located at the corner of New and Montgomery. So if you head south on Montgomery, just past the train tracks, the elevated train tracks, you'll see a building to your right. The proposal is submission to the state is to demolish that building and build a new facility there for the train, for the purpose of a local training for our for our residents. What SUNY has asked of the city and what we're prepared to to present to you is a match amount from our funds of $1.75 million. This ask is contingent upon them getting the funding from the state. So if if the funding does not come through, and we hope that's not the case, there would be no obligation for the city to provide these funds. The project is also being supported by the county. I think $1.2 million and Allen Foundation has about $300,000. I also have Tim Pennix here. If there are any questions.
Deputy Mayor, the local trade unions will be involved in the training of this, too?
Tim, can you speak to that, please?
When you say yes, as far as involved, being a state agency, I believe they will be involved in the construction of it. But then also just the nature of some of the training that will take place, the relationships that we already have with the trade unions will just move with this project as well. For across the board, trade unions for construction, as well as any other things that we may be doing related to hospitality, so on and so forth.
So so this will be somewhat, I mean, a lot of the trades, a lot of the union trades, of course, conduct their own training. This will be something like along those parallel lines, Mr. Pennick?
It'll be along those lines, but in many cases, it may be to prepare people to get into the trade unions at various levels. With the potential of 81, as well as all the other projects that we have here, you know, the unions are being hit in a good way because they're they're having trouble, you know, kick killing people off the bench. We want to be able to prepare people from the community to have access to those opportunities in the unions.
That's a good point, because I I know when the Amazon was built out there, every single ironworker in Local 60 was already working at it. So what is your plan to, like, I mean, I know the Deputy Mayor has connections in the neighborhoods, too, like we all, all city councilors do. But it'd be as far as recruiting kids or and young adults as far as letting them know about this program?
Again, with 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 what's happened in Syracuse, and I'm one who's always talking about it, we have a collaboration of so many efforts from community-based centers to, you know, the local economic development agencies that there is a pipeline to just about every access point in the community. Doesn't mean that we're we're done doing it. But the EOC in its own right, our location and the community ties we've already had for the past 40 years, will be able to provide people that pathway to get to us. And when we're talking trades, I also want to say with this with this training center, we'll be looking at a number of other things, you know, where trades are going really strong now and probably for the next 10 years. But we'll also have other types of training efforts there. CDL, that's something that's in demand right now. That will have, hopefully, when I say hopefully, will have simulators that we can at least let people get aware and acclimated to how they obtain their CDL licensing. Green energy, potentially, as I mentioned before, hospitality, an all-purpose kind of training center. But to answer your question, definitely with the ties into the communities, will this expand more than what we're already doing?
This, excellent. I'm sure I can speak for my colleagues that will do anything to help you along on this thing. So this is all ready, President Hudson. Thank you.
I do want to make a comment on that because I've worked closely with Tim and EOC over the course of the last 10, 15 years. And the trades have been involved considerably from that time. And not to mention, when we talk about collaborations, everything we're doing now, we have to think in in the whole picture, in the big picture. And when we talk about collaborations, we are actually, EOC will be able to pull some of those same folks you're talking about, Counselor, from CNY Works, because we have Chris Montgomery here. So he's kind of doing some of that training. So it's just a lot of work that has been going on over the last couple of years to make sure that we're collaborating together as a community so that we can get the whole community and we can all move forward. I just wanted to say that.
President Hudson, thank you. As you, as I said earlier, I am all about the big picture. You're absolutely right.
Can I add something, Counselor Hogan? You know, as somebody with workforce development background, Tim, thank you for this. You know, we have always talked about, you know, challenging people condition and giving them option. This this can, this is, this is one of those essential ways to do it. And and Tim, whatever we need to do to move this forward, I'm for it because this is good. This is good. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I guess this item is ready, President Hudson. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Majak.
Thank you, Madam President. Item 16 is Chief Cecil in?
Yep, I'm here, Counselor.
All right. Walk us through, please.
Sure. So we're asking for a waiver of the RFP to enter into a contract with a certified and highly experienced jujitsu instructor who has developed a curriculum specific for law enforcement. It's our goal, if approved, to put this, integrate this into our very next academy to train up all the recruits with jujitsu, a six-month training. So when they get out of the academy, they'll have this training. Jujitsu, because it's all about control and not strikes, there have been numerous studies that show injuries go down both to the officers and the suspects when officers are trained in this type of jujitsu. I have, and the reason for the waiver is obviously because it's so specialized and because this Mr. Tullini, the jujitsu instructor, came up with a specific curriculum for law enforcement. I want you to know I have our lead defensive tactic instructor, Lieutenant Don Patty, on right now. I think he could probably explain this in a little bit more detail if you'd like.
Any any question, Counselors?
Counselor, I talked to Officer, I think he believes he's a lieutenant, Lieutenant Patty for a while yesterday. What he stressed to me and is really interesting is this sort of allows another option of a non-lethal force for the police department to employ, which I think is probably a tremendous thing. And so and I guess other police departments, particularly one in Marietta, Georgia, have done extensive research on this and how effective this has been. So any type of non-lethal means we can we can train our police force in. I'm all in favor of. Thank you.
I agree with Counselor Hogan. Now, now, is is in terms of residency, is is he low, is the instructor local chief at all?
Big question. The instructor's on right now, Mr. Tullini. I don't know.
Okay.
Yes, I live in Baldenville.
Okay.
Suburbous area.
Okay. Now, now I'm asking that Chief Cecil, because I think I think we have a good number of folks here in the community that that can do that kind of stuff. And I don't know whether they consulted to see if their expertise could 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 aid the city in in this endeavor?
Sure. So I'm I'm going to ask Lieutenant Don Patty. I would imagine he did some research on this and has a reason for going. Again, as I mentioned before, keep in mind, I don't know if any of those instructors you mentioned have come up with a a curriculum that's specific for law enforcement. But Don, do you know, you have any background on that, Don? I think you're still on mute, Don. Yeah, no, we're not getting any audio. We can, we can circle back with that question. Again, I would imagine that's the answer, but.
Yeah, if I could, Counselor Majak, I'd just like to state to my fellow counselors, this was something I've been advocating for. You know, I've had multiple meetings with with Chief Buckner about this and with the administration. And the type of the type of jujitsu, you know, many people teach different types of martial arts. But the type of jujitsu Mr. Tullini teaches very specific sort that is the one that's been particularly shown to be effective with law enforcement that in the national trend of the Gracie School. And that this is, you know, while there are other martial arts, I believe they're one of the only ones that are are certified to that level. But perhaps, Mr. Tullini, you can speak to that. I don't know if that's if that's accurate, but that was my understanding of the situation, that you guys are at the forefront of the certain type of Brazilian jujitsu that has been shown to be super effective with law enforcement.
Yeah, so the Marietta study that was done about two years ago, they implemented essentially what we're trying to implement here with having consistent training for officers in Brazilian jujitsu. And they saw massive reductions in use of force, use of taser. Like they were saying, what'd they say here? We have 23% reduction in taser use, 48% reduction in officer injuries. So they had one year where they went from 25 officers injured on the job down to 15. And out of that 15, they were the non-trained jujitsu people. So none of the jujitsu-trained officers were injured during that time during that. They had a 53% reduction in serious injury to the suspects with the jujitsu-trained individuals. So the potential for savings and oh, what was that? Again, some reverb. So just the potential for savings and just a very good look for the departments, not maybe reducing the use of punches and things like that and reduce of use of force in the community. It's really, really amazing. And the other thing that we have tagged along with this is this will be the first peer-reviewed study of its kind. So a lot of the other studies have been internal, but we are partnered with Syracuse University. So that we will be able to show data, have it published, and it will be the first ever in the country actually done. So the fact that we could get this done here in Syracuse in the Northeast would be absolutely amazing.
I think I fixed my mute. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, just to piggyback off of what Ben was saying is Ben's been doing this for around 18 years or so. I've been doing this 15 years. He's a black belt. I'm a black belt in jujitsu. We've tailored this program specific to law enforcement. So with that being said, I'm familiar, and there is other law enforcement professionals who are involved in this tailoring process, who are who are familiar with the use of force laws that come from the state and federal government. So we are able to point that out where maybe a local martial artist isn't familiar with those laws. So this will be a seamless transition. And our goal here with this program is to change the culture of law enforcement use of force as well. So from the academy on, eventually through attrition, the older officers will retire. And the academy on, as we filter officers in, they will be familiar with this technique of leverage to deescalate situations that would amount to greater force at times.
And and I I I completely understand where where the intention here, which is which is to find the best that can teach our force and our office. But at the same time, there's another part. Am I okay? Oh, okay, good. There's another part where as as a community, that we have people that do this kind of work. And and I'm just wondering if there was an opportunity given to them and allowing their 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 experience to rule them out with first being offered and being made aware of the opportunity. That's that's where that's where I am, Chief. And I'm wondering if if that was done.
So I don't know, Counselor. My guess is, and Don and Mr. Tullini would know better, my guess is because of their relationship and and some of the things Don said, because of their familiarity with with the penal law, state, local law, and use of force and all those things that that they went directly to him to develop this curriculum. If that's different, please let me know, you two. But that's why they went there. Again, that's my guess.
And and I get that, that there might be some, 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 some rules and you know, things that have to be followed. But but I just, I just want, I just want to make sure that that we we give out the people that live in this community a chance. Because if we don't give them a chance, no one will. Because if we don't give them a chance, no one will. And that's our first line of business or line of people to look for services. I want to see that. I want to see that before Monday.
If I could just interject just for a second, nobody else is going to have a study though through SU. Like that's what is part of the program. I would be very, very surprised if any local martial artist is going to have the ability to put together an entire study that's going to be peer-reviewed. We're working with Genevieve Mueller, who is the Professor of Policy at SU. So I'd be very surprised if anybody can put this together.
Counselor Majok, I'm just wondering that, because this is the initial launch in our community. We want to have the backing of studies and the background data and information to support us moving forward. But perhaps there could be an opportunity for us to identify resources, identify an ability to do maybe a train-to-trainer or to give a more larger field of martial arts professionals insight into this type of opportunity. Do some kind of train-to-trainer opportunity moving forward. We'd have to, you know, set that up and figure out how that would work. But that might open up the ability a little bit more. But I really do believe to launch it, we definitely would want to have the backing of an established curriculum and established research because it would be the first time we're doing it in our community.
Counselor Majok, if I may, Deputy Mayor, I agree with you, but I'm going to piggyback onto what Counselor Majok said because I know that, I don't know the training and the ins and outs, but I know that Sharif Bay actually does this. So maybe we could do it as a train-to-trainer so that we can incorporate people from within the city structure.
Yeah, again, I would suggest that we take a look at moving, you know, moving forward. I would encourage, you know, Counselor, for you to consider us moving forward on this legislation and us establishing a process by which we can at least ensure that any other professionals in this field understand the nuances that's being presented by the professionals on the claw now.
Yes, and I'll be happy to sit and figure that out, Deputy Mayor. That my fear is five years from now, three, five years from now, that we are still in the same position where we say we don't have local people that can do this when we should have created some kind of pipeline to help the community get the resources that are within the community. Nothing against Ben and technique and his technique and his ability. This is great. This is great for us as the city to have somebody with this expertise. But I think that the city got to take care of the city folks.
No, I agree completely. The only reason we're doing this even now is it was newly introduced to us. Counselor Driscoll mentioned that he had been advocating for this as we looked at other methodologies for interaction with individuals in our city. So, you know, so the first response to that was to get the technical curriculum we have introduced us today.
Yes, and Counselors, I can send you guys some more resources on this one. There's, you know, this is, there's, and hopefully that'll help. But I agree with your assessment, Counselor Majok, that we should be looking to talk about long-term development for local resources. But I think to get the project rolling at this stage, there's a certain level of qualification with this style of Brazilian jujitsu that I believe Mr. Tullini is the only one qualified in the region to, who already has this kind of program developed and ready to rock. But I do think, you know, to your point, to develop something moving forward is a wise move. But I'll send everyone some data that influenced me to start advocating for this. You know, as they said, this, again, it's only been one major study that's been done, the one in Marietta that's been referred to. This is a fairly recent practice that, to see whole departments getting training like this. But as they said, they've seen an over fifty percent reduction in injuries to the public when the officers are interacting with them as well as, I believe Marietta is about half the size of Syracuse. And they saw a fifty thousand dollar a year reduction in claims due to injuries to officers. So it was also a huge financial reduction for the city's annual budget as well. But again, I think this certain style of jujitsu, I believe, if we check for the, and this kind of program has only been developed by Mr. Tullini in this area. But I do think we should have that broader conversation about trying to develop something locally to be in working coordination with it, if that makes sense.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Tullini, thank you for your willingness to work with our city. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. I do appreciate it, guys.
Okay. Next item, Chief.
Sure. So the next item is four vouchers for uniforms that Jimmy Oliver bought for PAL. As all of you know, he hit the ground running back last year and was buying up uniforms as he built soccer teams and basketball teams and football teams. And so we have four vouchers that are just old here and we're trying to pay them off. They all have to do with uniforms that he bought with the kids. The money is certainly there as he's got different pools of money and different budgets for his PAL thing. And these are vouchers from July and August of 2021. All four of them, the total adds up to two thousand and seventy-nine dollars, again, all for uniforms bought for the children.
Yeah, my part, anything for the kids. Any questions? All right. Thank you, Chief. The Chief Mann, the last item, is Chief Mann in?
Yep. How you doing, Counselor Majok? Hello, everybody. I have item number eighteen and I am just requesting permission to accept three thousand dollars from the Greater Strathmore Neighborhood Association to reimburse the fire department for our rescue team providing standby coverage for ice and cold water or rescue services during the pond hockey tournament. So that's number eighteen.
All right. Thank you, GSA, for the donation. Appreciate it. Any questions?
You didn't have to rescue anybody, did you?
No, no man in precedent. That's our goal.
All right, Counselor Majok.
That'll be all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Madam President. I have item nineteen. It's for the ARPA funds, two hundred and fifty thousand for the city as canvas. We had a very lengthy discussion on this last week. If there's not any questions, this item is ready. I do want to thank Jimmy Monto with TNT for the additional details that you were able to give. I know there were some concerns about the, about a realistic timeline, but I'm assuming you kind of cleared that up. So if there's any questions, then we can move forward.
I have a question if I could. On page seven of your proposal, Jimmy, it says that each mural's educational component will be uniquely based upon the artist's sector and content. Can you expand a little bit about how an educational component comes into the art projects?
Hi, everybody. Thank you, Counselor. So the answer to that is, is we don't know. It'll be based on what the mural is. So for instance, if we are going to do a first responders mural, let's say up near the hospitals, my first goal would be to reach out to those nursing schools and ask them to actually talk about what is going on in the mural. In another case, we may have a painter who is painting on the west side. Our first project that looks like our first pilot will be the Delavan Building. As you know, they have hundreds of artists attached to them. We may have someone who wants to do a painting course. We have a lot of money there. It will depend on how much money we have to do the educational component. So that one, we think, will be an actual artist talking about his style of painting, how he paints a wall, how he prepares a wall. Another thing that we're kind of talking about right now is places where we may put murals that abates the lead that is on the building. That my first goal with this is if we're going to, if there's going to be lead on outside, we want to encapsulate it. So if there would be an opportunity for, you know, layers of education, the painter talking about what their process is, the person from, you know, someone coming and talking about how dangerous lead is and why you want to cover it up inside a house, outside of a house. On the low end of that educational piece, we have one project that has already come to us, which is a shed that was a dilapidated shed that was owned by the Parks Department. Commissioner Lefave has let one of the neighborhood associations take over that shed and they have renovated it. The mural on the side of it has, over the years, become dilapidated. We have a painter to actually paint that. What we would do is have Huntington School, which is a block and a half away, walk kids up for a half an hour. It's two blocks, a block and a half, and have them sit there and the teacher would be open to, you know, that's a free way to do it. The teacher could talk to them about whatever they wanted to talk about. It sits next to a community garden, the educational piece, maybe, you know, what flowers are growing there, how to plant food, how to grow food, et cetera. So it's a very broad educational component, but we have, I'm not worried about the resources there. There are a lot of people in the city that want to teach kids or adults or senior citizens anything that they have the ability to teach them.
Okay, great. That's really helpful. I have another question if you don't mind. Counselor Allen, last meeting, mentioned the Martin Luther King Junior mural and how it was placed in a position under a highway and the rust and things are affecting it. So I believe, Jimmy, you mentioned that you are taking that into consideration. So are there monies in this two fifty that will be saved for future maintenance? Or do you expect to have to come back to either us or somewhere else for more funds to support that?
Well, my goal with any sort of project like this, these art projects, especially painting, is to first ask the artist how long they think that it will last. Using the Martin Luther King mural as an example, that process, no offense to the people that handled it back then, was flawed from the get-go. So nobody did the study that they needed to do before they put that painting on that bridge to say, is it, first of all, is it viable and how long will it last? Now, if they would have done that, someone would have said to them, okay, listen, water leaches over this steel bridge and that water creates rust and it's going to run all the way down it. So my first goal is to avoid that from happening from the get-go. That being said, paint only lasts so long, right? So we have, throughout the city, there are spots where we paint roads. So in front of a few of the schools, there are road murals. They know that those only last a few years. We live in a city with snow and ice and plows and a lot of cars. So my goal is not to come back to the council or to you come back for more funding to try to repair those murals, but it's in the conversation. So if we know that it's only going to last for ten years and the artist says, listen, over the next ten years, you need to find three hundred dollars a year to have someone clean it. Okay, we probably can figure out a way to do that. The Martin Luther King mural, for instance, we do have money left from that grant. It's just finding somebody to tackle repairing something that was flawed from the beginning. So to answer your question in a long way, my goal is to not put them in places where we know they're going to end up a disaster five years later. Nobody wants to clean up those messes, but, you know. That being said, if, we also do not want to put these murals on buildings that are land bank properties that are demolition candidates. That's not going to happen. There's no reason to do that, knowing that, you know, eighteen months from now, they're going to tear down what an artist went and painted. So.
Okay, one more question. Wrong answer, oh, wrong answer, yeah.
Wrong answer, not the wrong answer.
Okay, good. Hopefully not the wrong answer. Last meeting, also, you mentioned that there was evidence of community support. Can you expand on what that meant?
I don't think I said that there was evidence of community support. I will say that there is excitement in the artist's community. And when this is talked about, it's briefly brought up in some of the TNT meetings. And that evidence is always, there's always evidence when we say there's going to be money coming in to pretty up eyesores, right? So if you say to any one of these TNT sectors, we're trying to get a grant, we're trying to get funding for something to make something that isn't beautiful, beautiful, there's always excitement around that. And that evidence is, that's palpable in these meetings. You know, there are eight meetings a month. Pre-COVID, they were obviously more in the room, but now even via Zoom. There has been really no pushback to this sort of project and there rarely is. The pushback will come if it's a mural that someone lives across the street from it doesn't like what the content is. But we are going to be very careful to make sure that the neighborhoods are aware of what's going up there. We'll be sure to do that.
Okay, one last, I don't know if it's a question. I think it's a statement. Last week, there was a meeting with LeMoyne College neighborhood area. And there was mention that they were wanting more assistance with building neighborhood unity and maybe even a neighborhood association. So that, to me, sparks an idea, would this be, money be better or part of the money be better to maybe unify versus beautify? Because I think there's a real need, especially coming out of this pandemic. As you mentioned, the artists are suffering, but I think that communities and neighborhoods are suffering to an extent because of the isolation. So I'm just wondering if TNT might consider maybe just paring down their requests of two hundred and fifty thousand. It's a pretty big number and consider maybe more unification.
Well, I don't think it's a big number when you divide it by eight, in eight ways. So if you divide it down, it becomes thirty-one thousand, thirty-two thousand dollars per sector. I don't think that number is that big because we're dealing with eight different neighborhoods. But I will say this, for the last few years, we have, and many of these counselors can speak to this, one of the things that I have tried to do and we have tried to do as an organization is outreach. And it becomes very, very difficult to reach out to the neighbors, whether it be up around LeMoyne or it be the north side, south side, anywhere, when you don't have the money to do so because knocking door to door is not very effective. But getting something out to these communities to say, listen, these meetings exist. TNT meetings are there for the neighbor to come out and talk about whatever you want to talk about. And it does work when there's an item attached to it, and I would kick to Counselor Driscoll for this. If you go up into the east side TNT and you say the word deer, we're going to work on getting rid of the deer, that meeting will have a hundred and fifty people in it like that. And it's trying to find a way to actually bring people in for something that they're interested in. And this is one of those projects that's exciting. There are neighbors sitting in neighborhoods that have been staring at a blight for years and/or staring at nothing pretty. So I think they go hand in hand. Beautifying and actually unifying very easily go together. Now, if I had twenty million dollars, we'd be talking about a very different situation. We'd be, you know, we're already going to get press around city as canvas. I have the interview tomorrow that we're definitely going to push hard to make sure that this entire city knows that we are doing this. And then we, I've said this last time in the committee meeting and I'll say it again, we have to look like we're trying. And if we don't look like we're trying, then we look like we're giving up. And I'm not one to give up and neither is the structure of TNT, the board, the members that come to those meetings. Those are not people that are looking to give up, so.
Jimmy, you'll push after the vote about the program?
Yes, absolutely. After the vote, after the vote.
Counselor Allen, can I ask a question quickly? Okay, Mr. Montos, let me ask you this. There's eight different sectors, right? And the question was mentioned about the maintenance and the repair and all that good stuff. So would there be a way for you to basically hold some funding, little funding to the side to ensure that there's going to be money for maintenance of these structures from each sector of TNT? Because I mean, just, okay.
Yes, President Hudson. So I would say that, and it will be a discussion with each of the artists. You know, I think that the small, I'm looking to try to stretch this money as far as we can get. We already have some private funding that has come in to offset the program, you know, little pieces. But we have commitment from the order, the larger foundations to say, we love this. We like this idea. Let's partner. Let's get together. So my goal is to try to find money to hold, to take care of these things as we go, you know. Thirty thousand dollars doesn't go that far when you're painting the whole side of a building. So I don't expect that all of these will be large-scale projects. Some of these sectors may decide that that thirty thousand dollars, if they can stretch it and get three or four art projects out of it. And we'll talk to them and say, what's it going to cost and how long is it going to last? And we plan to be very involved with where they're buying their materials and verifying that what they're painting with will last for as long as it possibly can. Understandably, though, you know, paint only lasts so long. If we paint our house, you know, it only lasts so long too, so.
Did we lose Jimmy?
Did you lose me?
Okay, there you go.
I don't know where I cut off.
It sounded like you were ending your sentence off.
I was. So the answer is, the answer is yes, President Hudson. As much as we possibly can set aside, we will.
Thank you.
Brother, this is just a general question. Further, this is just a, a general question in regards to the TNT on the east side. Um, and Councilor Driscoll, maybe you can answer this and Jimmy also, but when you guys are tracking like the address, Jimmy, is there a lot of residents from the Salt Springs neighborhood that actually attend the meetings?
There is, there is, um, uh, I would say there is, uh, definitely some representation, you know? I, I wouldn't say it's exactly equitable. Um, there's a lot more people coming from the Nottingham neighborhood, but there are a, a few representatives who are regular, who are there that, that do represent the, uh, Salt Springs area that, that come regularly.
Councilor Allen, if I can add, this is also part of the conversation we had in the presentation around the LeMoyne Neighborhood Project, really beginning to, um, empower and mobilize the neighbors along Salt Springs and along Dakin and all those streets, um, just east and west of Fayette Street. Uh, excuse me, north and south of Fayette Street.
Councilor Allen, I also think that, you know, the, the people that attend the meetings, uh, you know, sometimes or most of the time depends on what's the agenda that will bring in, you know, the, the people to the meeting. I think that's.
Am I still locked up or can you hear me?
We can hear you.
I, I lost my video, but so I will, to use an example, so as, as most of you know, we received, um, a large amount of funding for lead awareness, uh, through the Community Foundation. And one of the things that we tied to that was dropping literature regarding lead awareness at doors. And with that, we thought, we're going to be at the doors anyways. Let's drop information about the TNT meetings. And we saw an uptick pretty quickly of people attending the meetings. And then COVID just, you know, slapped all of that down. Um, the, the plan is the same with this, with this art program, to try to do outreach while we're doing, when we do a call for artists, when we do a call for locations, it's also a call for people to come to meetings. Um, but like we said, like, uh, Councilor Penaigwa just said, we, we need an issue usually to get people in the room. Um, be it positive or negative, but we're trying.
Jimmy, if I could ask real, or Councilor Allen, if I could ask one real quick question. Um, Jim, um, all us councillors go to TNT meetings, especially us district councillors. So what do we say to a TNT member who's, who equates, uh, the funding for this as opposed to funding for police cameras? Uh, Chief Seeso goes, oh, uh, and hears about police cameras all the time. So how do we weigh this? Spending a quarter of a million dollars for these murals as opposed to spending money to, uh, for police cameras?
Well, I, I'm not sure that I'm equipped to answer that question in regards to, I don't know what it costs. If 30, how far $30,000 in a single sector goes towards police cameras? Um, I can tell you from the couple of projects I've been involved in with police cameras, it, that money would not go very far. But I, I think I wouldn't want to mix those two conversations together. And I would probably, you know, defer to an actual police officer to answer that question.
Well, I, I don't want to mix these questions together either, but we'll obviously be asked those questions. Because I get, that's what I continually get as a city councillor is questions. Everybody wants a police camera on their corner.
Um, Councilor, I'll just say that, you know, it, it, it really speaks to quality of life across our city. Um, cameras play a huge role in that, um, equipping our, um, public safety to protect us, contribute to that, also beautifying our community, which all of us get calls about on a constant basis. So I, I think that, um, when we look at it in scale, um, committing $250,000 to take parts of our community for beautification, I think is a good investment.
Chief Seeso put something in the chat. He just said that $30,000 will purchase two or three cameras.
One on Avery Avenue, Joe.
That one's going up, Pat. I'll tell you, it'll be up in, I won't give you the deadline, but it's going up.
And you got mines over on, uh, Coolidge, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else? You know, we got $250,000 to spend on murals. We maybe, maybe get a few more cameras.
I know the corner of Stafford and Sunny Crest is dying for one as well with all the break-ins they've had. I mentioned it to you just a while ago, councillor.
Remember my constant cry, chief?
Talk you district councillors.
All right, uh, so if there's no other questions, this, uh, will be ready hopefully for Monday.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Driscoll.
Thank you, Madam President. I have items 20 through 30. Um, if, I believe the first few are, are with, uh, DPW with Commissioner Robinson. So if anybody from your team wants to speak to item 20 from the DPW.
I can speak to the first one, councillor. This is Cory Dunham. Um, so what we have before us is, uh, accepting a donation from IOT Right. Um, and it's a local tech startup that approached the city. They have a software solution using air purification technology and sensors to eliminate airborne contaminants. I mean, as everybody can, um, imagine, you know, with COVID, obviously that's become, um, a priority. But, you know, it also, even aside from COVID, would address things like the flu, bacteria, allergens. And so what they're donating, um, to the city would, um, you know, the software solution, but also would monitor air quality. Um, it would have a dashboard for real-time monitoring. We've done this in partnership with both, um, engineering and Ian Brown is on here to speak to any questions folks might have. And also Mike, Mike Sardakiev, who heads up the city's HVAC systems. Um, so, uh, you know, it would basically allow us to evaluate the effectiveness of the solution to see about, um, the degree to which it improves air quality and efficiency. And, and talking to Mike, um, you know, although, uh, people with, that DPW was the best place to put this, that there's been a lot of investments in both City Hall and City Hall Commons in terms of air quality. And, you know, we've, um, so DPW would be the best place to put this. Um, and obviously it's a pilot. It doesn't commit the city to procure any of the equipment or software in the future. It's just a pilot to see how effective it is and if it ends up being something that we'd want to pursue long-term.
So for all intents and purposes, this is a free trial, yes?
Correct. Yeah, it doesn't obligate us to do anything.
Okay. How many, how many will that produce, Cory?
What do you, what do you mean councillor? How many?
Uh, how many purification, uh, equipment or, or?
Yeah, I don't know. Ian, do you know the, the specific details in terms of how many sensors they're looking to place?
Yeah, um, they're putting 10 air scrubbers with sensors in the condition spaces at DPW. So this is the offices and, um, uh, labor areas within the, uh, building. And, um, uh, that, that represents a total of 15,550 donated to the city. Um, and each of these air scrubbers has sensors on them. They give us real, real time, um, you know, information on, uh, the filtration and the air quality in the building. So it's, um, it's a pretty unique system. We don't really have, uh, smart building technology like this in any of our current facilities. You know, as far as, uh, air quality and, and monitoring. So this is, um, this is a pretty unique and, um, pretty neat pilot that we can really take advantage of.
And this is for one year, Cory?
Uh, yeah, I think so. I mean, I'm not even sure if it will take that long. I don't know, Ian, if you know, to, to make the, to make the measurements. I mean, they'll do measurements obviously ahead of time and then install the system and see. But I, I, you know, I don't even think it would go that long in terms of how long it'll take to see whether or not there's an impact.
What we're going to be doing is getting a baseline data, um, over a two-week period to show us, um, the efficiency of the system. So over the course of two weeks, as part of this pilot, they're going to show us how the system responded to air quality and then corrected the air quality. And then the city will have, uh, full access to the data for that two-week period. Um, and then at that point, um, you know, I'd imagine we could sit down and decide if we wanted to go to a more of a broader measure or eventual contract with this company.
And, and I, I take, um, I take this, uh, this equipment somehow would help also with, with COVID. Cause I have seen other, other equipment that.
Yeah. Yeah, this is, um, we currently have UV filtration in some of our buildings. Um, but this is a, uh, combination of UV filtration along with ionization that traps potential pathogens in the air, which is much more effective than just standard UV filtration. Um, but this is coupled with actual, um, data recovery. So we actually know real time how clean our air is, which, um, uh, I, I just, I've never heard of such technology in any of our buildings. So, um, you know, it's, it's pretty, pretty cool stuff.
Thank you.
Okay. Do any, uh, other councillors have any further questions on that item, 20? Okay. If not, we'll, uh, we'll move on to 21, if anyone on DPW wants to address that one.
Yeah, I will take that one as well, councillor. So this is just an agreement, an existing agreement that we have with Syracuse University, um, for them to, uh, purchase, uh, reserve, you know, parking spots within the Washington Street Garage. So this is just the first of the two one-year renewal options. So, um, so there's just exercising that option. It's an existing contract, nothing new here.
Any questions from councillors? Okay. If not, uh, we'll move on to item, uh, 22, which is, I believe, yeah, oh, that's the, uh, the radar program. We're going to have a committee meeting shortly after this. So I don't know if we want to just save all questions for that, for the committee meeting that will commence right after this meeting? Does that work for everyone? If somebody else has questions? Okay. Uh, then item 23, and I believe that's attached to a few other items. Uh, you want to speak to that, the capital investments, uh, on, on many new, uh, items?
Yeah, Jeremy, I think it's 22 and 23 councillor are the radar sign. So I think this would be 24 for the.
Oh, 24, I'm sorry, yeah.
No, that's okay.
So 24 through 28 is all, uh, capital equipment purchases. Uh, we got, uh, Rich Deveste, our, our, uh, fleet manager on here to speak about the, uh, you know, the, the new, uh, the actual equipment that we're purchasing. But I'll give you a rundown on, on, on 24 and 25. We're purchasing some sand eye packers. Uh, Rich can definitely, uh, go over that. 26, I believe, we're purchasing four 10-wheel dumps, uh, with salt spreaders. Uh, to help our, uh, plowing operation as well as a paver. Uh, and 27 is, uh, you know, purchasing a few equipment through, uh, a bunch of equipment. So it's, uh, you know, we're doing some brush trucks, a payloader we need for snow and ice, uh, a couple of lift trucks, mini dumps. Um, so Rich can go over those. I just wanted to give you a, a rundown on what, what, what we're purchasing. So, Rich, if you want to take it away?
Uh, yeah, this is Rich Deveste, the, uh, fleet director. If you have any questions on it, uh, we're just making, uh, equipment purchases for, um, a little earlier than usual because it's taken 18 to 24 months to get, uh, large equipment built now because of the, uh, manufacturing conditions. Um, we're trying to get ahead of it.
Well, I, I had a question, a question, Mr. Deveste, to start off. Well, the first few items, the first few items are, uh, re- regarding trash, right? The other ones are, are more related to snow removal, but the first few are, are with sanitation, correct?
Right, the sanitation, uh, we're, it's not three trucks either, it's five, five packers. Uh, sanitation trucks that we'll be buying. And then we're getting $300,000 back in a grant that we've already been awarded the grant. We just haven't been awarded the fund yet.
Oh, great. Well, I was curious, we've had, we've been having the conversation since I, since I started running for council about, uh, the potential transition of, of the armed trucks and the covered trash cans. I'm just curious if these sanitation vehicles will be more of the same that we currently have or are we taking, uh, the leap that we've been discussing for a while with the study that we, we recently had a study done, if I'm not mistaken, evaluating how, you know, what this transition would look like and how, uh, how it would be. So I, I guess I would be curious to have a follow-up on that, that study and, and what we think. And will we be taking the leap? If not, if not these vehicles, um, what is the, the future trajectory of the armed, uh, sanitation trucks and, and transition to the different types of receptacles?
As far as the equipment, they are plumbed for, they do, they will not have the lifters in the back, but they are plumbed for it. So we would just have to put the mechanism on it. We wouldn't have to start over.
Yeah, just so to that point, yeah, we're trying to lay the groundwork for, so that we have options, uh, which, whatever direction we want to go with our sanitation operation. I have reached out to the council office staff to schedule a committee meeting towards the end of this month where we can present to the council the findings of the study and, um, and engage with obviously the council and the public in terms of what direction we want to go in. I mean, there are suggestions and recommendations made in the study. Um, but we really want to engage with everybody on that. But to Rich's point, um, you know, and this is true about the packers that we ordered uh, over a year ago, right? Um, we ordered six over a year ago that we're still waiting on. Um, and so I think now they're scheduled for April, hopefully. Um, but you know, with all of these purchases that we're making, it's with an eye towards where we're going and to make sure we have that flexibility in the vehicles that we purchased, purchased that, um, they're going to be able to suit our needs, whatever they might be down the road.
Yeah, so. Quick question, is this additional trucks or are they replacing old trucks that are being phased out?
They're replacing very old trucks. We're replacing 2006s and 2007s. They're very tired of them.
One for one then?
Yes.
Thanks.
So Cory, it's going to be a seamless transition because I don't know what plum means when Rich, Rich said plum.
So the, the mechanism on the back is hydraulic. So the hydraulic lines are there, but the mechanism itself is very cumbersome for the workers that are loading from the back to work around if they're not using the carts with the tops. So instead of putting something in their way, when we're ready to move to the carts, we'll add that mechanism and put it on the back. Cause otherwise they have to work around it. It's, it's very cumbersome to have that there without using it.
So I say anything Commissioner Robinson wants and Rich wants, we go for it. That's what I say.
Thanks councillor.
Thank you.
I'll ride with that. All right. Rich, you want to continue? Do we have any, uh, further? I, I know I, I kind of sidetracked your, your initial presentation there. Is, is there more you want to update some?
Well, the next items are just for the, uh, again, to add more, uh, 10-wheel plows. They're 18 to 24 months for delivery. So we're basically ordering now for winter of '24. So as our vehicles, our machines are aging out, instead of, you know, forecasting a year, you know, we got to forecast too. So we'll, you know, trying to keep everything, not getting too far past 10 years old. You know, I've got to start now to, to replace 2012s because they'll be 12 years old and in 2024 when these get delivered. So that's, that's the reason to make these purchases now.
Can I ask what the total number of plows in that fleet is, the ideal number?
Uh, the ideal number would be over 25. You know, we run around 20 now. We keep them all running. But they're aging out too. I mean, we're running 10 and 12-year-old machines now and they take quite a beating.
Let's make sure we say if we keep them all running because they're not always all running, so.
No. We will, we'll keep them rolling. And the other equipment is just, is, is just the same thing. You got to get them built now for, you know, basically fall of '23 and spring of '24. So this is just equipment that's going to age out over the next two years.
I know this meeting is running over, but can I ask a question? Did we ever get those six snow plows that we had put out there?
We, we, everything that we've ordered, we, we have had delivered. Yes, we're using them. Uh, yeah. Those are the ones we put the names on last year. There were 10 of them.
10, yeah.
Yeah, there were 10, yeah, 10 snow plows that we purchased, I think, the beginning of 2020. And then yesterday, and then last year was the big purchase for packers that we're still waiting on.
Okay, so with the snow plows, I think we were supposed to purchase some and they were gonna give us some?
We had, we had engaged with the throughway authority, um, and, and a couple of other agencies. Um, and Rich, I don't know if you want to speak to, to, to what happened with those, but, um,
Well, the, yeah, the state gave us a couple of trucks to use for the winter. That first winter, uh, the winter two years ago when we were down to seven or eight trucks. But we've since given them back since we, we did. But we've since given them back since we, we did, uh.
I get that, when we were buying the plows, I recall, and I don't know, Councilor Hogan, if you remember, or Driscoll, or Allen, we were buying the plows and we were supposed to get so many for the price of what we were buying. I have to go back in my notes, but I do recall that.
We get reimbursed from a CHIPS grant from the state for snow removal, if that's what you're thinking. We get the money back through CHIPS.
Yeah, the state provides us, provides us funding for, for some of our vehicle purchases, so, um, we bought ten, and I, I'd have to look up to see how much we received in reimbursement for those snowplows.
Cory, maybe you could give us a little synopsis from, I remember this whole thing when we first came in, when I first came back to the council. Uh, President Hudson's right, we went, uh, our plows were in bad shape, they were old, and you went on a whole we purchased a bunch of, uh, bunch of plows, a lot of equipment. And just give us a little syn- synopsis about, you know, the breakdown, and I think that would probably answer President Hudson's question.
Sure.
Because I think that's what you're calling.
Yep.
Okay, is that? We, we answer all questions on that one?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, uh, so then we have item twenty-nine? I believe, wasn't that, was the last one twenty-eight? We have item twenty-nine? That one, it.
That's a, yeah, that's a, a waiver that we're trying to, uh, establish with Camillus landfill, take our, uh, construction debris there. Um, we gotta move out of our old site, which is, uh, we currently call Jurassic Park, but I think it's called what do we call it in now, in Peach Street?
Peach Street.
Um, so we gotta move out of there and we gotta find a place to, uh, to haul, uh, our construction debris and, and, um, Camillus was on the, the lowest end of, of that, so. And you could speak about it if you, if you got more details, but.
It's the closest and the cheapest, um, and so this is good until the next fiscal year. Uh, they're a municipality, so, um, it's the Camillus landfill and they take construction debris. Does anybody have any questions about it?
I have a question, if this is related to why the construction debris pickups were reduced? The laws to you?
No, um, uh, we were facing a COVID budget and we were facing lots of cuts, and, um, I, uh, noticed that the ordinance, uh, says that you as a resident, all of us, we only get two pickups a year. So, um, this was a way to keep track of those two pickups a year. Because we didn't have like a computer or data structure that could do that, so, uh, this makes it two per year, which follows the ordinance as it's written. Um, but initially it was, uh, due to, you know, COVID budgetary cuts, but you know, we want to follow the ordinance as it's written, so that's what we're continuing with, but this is due to um, Jurassic Park, as Jeremy said, uh, the Peach Street location, where we take in all the yard waste, construction debris, tires, um, spoils or hard fill from different jobs, street sweeper, um, material. Uh, the DEC is doing a brownfield cleanup, which is a good thing. It's a site-owned property, uh, the DEC is cleaning it up, not from our operations, but from, you know, previous owners. It is next to the Winkelman Building, and so they need me, uh, off the site while they are doing that remediation, so I kind of have to find a new home for everything.
Awesome, thanks for the great answer.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions on this one?
I just want to thank the Commissioner for, uh, fixing, uh, uh, you know, a water main break, uh, break yesterday here in my street, it like left everybody without water, but they did it quickly, so thank you. Where's, where's Commissioner Awal? Thank you for that.
You can thank your councillor if you want.
They do a good job, those kids, let me tell you.
Yeah, they, they should do, yeah. Thank you.
It ain't easy. All right, uh, the last item, uh, number thirty, I believe, is with, uh, Commissioner Robinson. Engineering.
Good afternoon, everyone. Mary Robinson, city engineer. Um, this is, uh, we have an existing grant or had existing legislation from twenty-twenty-one with, for a grant with US Fish and Wildlife. Um, it was for fifty-five thousand dollars, and we're asking to amend the grant to increase it from fifty-five thousand to sixty-three thousand dollars, so an eight thousand dollar increase. Um, and the local share will also be reduced from twenty percent to ten percent. Um, so the total project is seventy thousand dollars. Um, and the ten percent local share of seven thousand dollars will be funded with TNT funds. And this grant is to build a canoe kayak launch, uh, in the inner harbor along the west shore, just south of Fair Street. So we're hoping to get this project done this year.
That's brilliant. Do we have, do we have any estimates of, of, uh, how much use that that kayak, uh, community would, would get? Anybody know if there's estimates of, about, you know, if there's a need, if there's a, a great desire in the community for it?
I can look into that, I don't know if we have an estimate of that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from my fellow councillors on that item? Okay, if none, then, uh, those are my items, Madam President, uh, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Green?
Hey, Madam President, I have a waiver item, which is number thirty-one. It is an appointment to a vacancy on the Board of Assessment Review. Um, I am proposing to appoint Kristen Greeley, she is an attorney. Um, and traditionally, there is an attorney on the Board of Assessment Review, we don't apparently have one, so it helps round out that group a little bit. Um, she is a city resident and, uh, practices in the city as well. Questions on this one? Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, and with that, I need a motion to adjourn. So, second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All righty, have a good afternoon, see you at the Public Works.
Yes, thanks, President.